It's June 16th, 6:15 PM. And we'll call the roll, please.
Kurt?
Yes.
Linebacke?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Biscus?
Yes.
And Harris is absent. That's right. Yeah, thank you. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a couple visitors up front. First is Paula Burney from the Rotary Club of Ma'ami. She is the president-elect program director of community involvement and new opportunities to support Ma'ami. Welcome, Paula.
Thank you.
How are you doing?
Great. Thank you, Mayor.
Good to see you.
Thanks. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and citizens of Ma'ami. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Paula Burney, and I'm honored to serve as the incoming president of the Rotary Club of Ma'ami. I also have with us our current president, Milva Wagner, and our president-elect, Jeff Slosson. I'm very proud. Nancy Gagne and Mayor McDonald are also members of our club, so, thank you. This year, our club proudly celebrates 75 years of service to the Ma'ami community. That's 75 years of neighbors coming together, not for recognition, but out of a shared love for this city and the people who call it home. Rotary is known internationally, but our work is deeply rooted right here in Ma'ami. We've supported literacy programs like Claire's Day, funded college scholarships for our high schoolers, and partnered with the schools to encourage a lifelong love of reading. We've also stood beside our neighbors in meaningful ways, like when we purchased a school bus for the Ma'ami Senior Center to help our older adults stay connected and independent, along with food drives, park cleanups, and community support efforts. These are just a few examples of what's possible when people unite around service. But we know we can do even more together. And that's why I'm here tonight, to invite the city of Ma'ami to explore opportunities to collaborate with us, whether it's volunteering, side-by-side, co-hosting a community event, sharing priorities, or simply keeping open lines of communication. We want to align our energy with yours. We're launching a new monthly coffee meeting on the second Wednesday of each month. We'll gather at 7:45 at local coffee shops. Our first one is going to be in July at Georgette's; in August, it will be at Levi and Lilacs. It's a casual gathering where community members, leaders, and changemakers can come together to connect and collaborate, and I invite all of you to please attend. You're always welcome. Just imagine the momentum we could build with city leadership and Rotary working hand-in-hand. Together, we can respond to community needs faster, lift up local causes, and celebrate all that makes Ma'ami a place we're proud to call home. Rotary doesn't just build projects; we build relationships. And we'd be honored to strengthen ours with the city of Ma'ami as we step into the next 75 years of service. Thank you again for your time and for the leadership you provide every day in this great community. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. So I know you've put your stamp in this community in a number of ways, and we are so appreciative of that, and also your willingness to continue to do the work you do in our community. The shelter house down at Sci-Cup Park, obviously, is the Rotary donated that, built it, donated it, so everybody can use it. And also, the Safety City Jeeps that the kids drive every year, which they just graduated last Friday. And you've done that for quite a while, and I know your commitment and your heart, and it's profound. So thank you for the work that you do, and looking forward to working with you in the future. So, thank you. We have another guest, Judge Corey. If you'd like to come forward, please, I think she's got some things she'd like to share with us. Welcome, Nicole. Hi.
I'm just Nicole Corey tonight, so...
Okay.
Nice to meet you guys. Nice to see you guys. I shouldn't say "meet you." One of the items on your agenda is for a resolution for Project I Am and Acoustic Sproutism. I'm only here to say thank you to city council, the city of Ma'ami, the mayor, city administrator, Chief Sproul, Chief Lovitshevsky, the building operators, the zoning ordinance, everybody that has, over the last 18 years, has worked with us. I'm sure you all know the impact that we've had on the city of Ma'ami and the community as a whole. You know, downtown Toledo's begging us to pick up and move down there. We've stayed extremely loyal to Ma'ami, even though we've outgrown it. And if it wasn't for all of you, we wouldn't be able to continue to grow and keep it here. But because you're consistently and constantly working with us and giving us the ability to expand and grow, and because of all of the businesses that take the time to let us take over your city for a weekend, we have been able to do really, really amazing work over the last 18 years. You know, we're embarking on 20 years, which is pretty spectacular. I think most of you know we were featured nationally on a program hosted by the actor Dennis Quaid recently. They came to your town, and they filmed your streets and your businesses, and put you on a national map. We have given out over a million dollars over the last 18 years, which is pretty extraordinary, to say that you took a group of volunteers who had an idea and built it from nothing, and we've become what we've become. And I am only here, usually I don't come to these things because of my job. It isn't good for me to ask people for things, nor am I asking anybody right now. But I'm thanking you. I am thanking you from the bottom of my heart for letting us grow and letting us continue to keep this here. My word and my loyalty is everything to me, and I have consistently said from day one that we would not leave the city of Ma'ami, especially the Village Idiot. This is where we were born; these are the people who gave us everything. And because of that, you have allowed me to keep my word and to remain loyal to all of you. So I just cannot express to you enough how important the cooperation we have had with all of you has been, you all, even picking up shovels and, you know, putting tents back up when they fall because of rain in the morning of the event. You guys are throwing all of your help toward us, and we are very blessed to call Ma'ami home, and we won't be leaving anytime soon. So I thank you very much. Thanks for giving us a minute, and we look forward to hearing your vote at the end of the day. So, thank you all.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Just to remind council, that's under Old Business on Item A. It's just a resolution authorizing support for Project I Am. And under, I'm going to turn it over to committee at whole. President Barrow.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. The agendas are in front of you. Do you have any questions or concerns?
Just before we do that, I think I'd like to move to the introduction of the firefighter. Can we do that?
Thank you, yes.
Okay. Chief Lovitshevsky, if you can come forward, please.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Tonight, we're introducing Nick Militello. Nick comes from the Sandusky County area and lives in Gibsonburg, and he's brought his family tonight. Nick is our ninth new hire since we transitioned to full-time in October, which has gone very well for the city. Our full-time staff and our part-time staff have done a tremendous job these last six, seven months. We have documented actual saves; we have actual documented response times that are drastically reduced, and this is just his contribution here to our city just adds to that with the staffing. So as we move on here, I'm going to have him introduce his family that he's brought here and his beautiful baby girl. So, Nick, if you'd like to come up and...
Joining me today are my daughter Audrey Jean Militello, about eight months old now, my fiance Brooke Knopf, my parents, my mother Carla Militello, and my father Vince Militello. So, they're already joining me. Grandparents were able to make it, but some of them had some surgeries, so we're like, eh, won't make them walk very far, so...
You're welcome, Nick. Nick comes to us from the Fosteria Fire Department. He was previously full-time, and he also worked in Sandusky County EMS as well. So, Nick, welcome to the Ma'ami Fire Division officially, and I'll have your...
Thank you very much.
(inaudible). Are you a whole?
Sure.
Are you... Okay. Here, let's trade.
We'll trade off.
Never too late. Mine's 24 now, but you remember those days. All right? There you go. That's a loop.
So, welcome, Nick. We take a lot of pride in our emergency services here, and you've joined a great group of men and women that serve in the fire division. So, thank you and appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll make our way out. And thanks to all of A-Shift and some of our other firefighters that came out tonight as well to support me.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Very nice. Thank you.
Anybody in the crowd that would like to leave, you're welcome to leave. We're going to start our business now.
I got to give a shout-out to the Rotary, too.
Yeah. President Barrow.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. The agenda's in front of you. Are there some comments or remarks, questions we have on the agenda? Councilman Noonan?
Thank you, President Barrow. I just wanted to make the comment, kind of piggybacking off of Judge Corey's comments. I appreciate everybody allowing this third reading to be today. The last meeting, I was unavailable, doing, being overseas with family, visiting my brother. So I appreciate everybody kind of delaying that third reading until today, so I had the opportunity to vote on it. I think everybody is well aware of how important this event is to me and what the fundraising does to individuals with disabilities and their families. So, just want to thank the rest of council and the administration for allowing me to vote on this today. And obviously, you know, Judge Corey kind of mentioned it. You know, appreciate Judge Corey, her husband Scott, I know Rob's here. If I'm missing anybody else, I apologize. But those individuals, they work year-round for that event to be at Ma'ami and make it successful, you know, year in, year out, like she just said. I mean, raising a million dollars to help kids, I mean, that's, especially with disabilities, that is what matters, right? At the end of the day. So I just wanted to say, appreciate Judge Corey and the rest of her crew for, you know, everything that they do for that event and for the organization in allowing, you know, giving us the honor to host that event. So, appreciate them. And again, I just want to reiterate my thanks to the administration and to council for allowing this to be voted on today because I was unavailable at the last meeting. That's all. Thank you.
Sure, you're welcome. Any other questions, concerns? Councilman Linebacke?
Under the consent calendar, Item 10G, about this amicus brief, some of the reading I did, I read another brief that was available online, and, you know, the issue, as far as I'm concerned, is not so cut and dry that it should be under the consent calendar as a, oh, well, that's with everything else, let's just, you know, vote yes on everything. I'd like to make a motion that 10G be moved to New Business.
Alan, can you weigh in on this, please? For clarification.
Well, this, it's an amicus brief that basically, if the Ohio Supreme Court accepts the position, the appellant in this case, it has the potential to greatly delay implementation of any legislation that's passed by any municipality. So that's a reason it's there. I mean, it can be moved, I guess, it's just a motion, so...
Okay, thank you. What's the motion on the floor? Do I have a second?
I second that motion.
Okay, call the roll.
Kurt?
No.
Linebacke?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Biscus?
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll move, 10G, to New Business. Is that the 11E?
11E.
Thank you. Are there any other...
He said 11E.
I believe so.
Is that right? Yes.
Right, Casey?
Yes.
Okay, good. Any more questions or concerns?
Yes, if I may.
I'm sorry, yeah.
So, I wanted to ask a little bit more about the streetlight. I think it's I, Consent Calendar I. Just to get a little bit more input about this, you know, currently on our website, it says, there's a special notation saying, "Streetlights are the responsibility of Toledo Edison," but we're talking about, you know, replacing more poles. You know, I've heard over in the past how one of the reasons we're wanting to do this is the lack of responsiveness from Toledo Edison. So I guess one of the questions I have is, you know, long-term, does it make more sense to, if we're having issues with responsiveness at Toledo Edison, and I know our neighbors are having issues with responsiveness, because I've been reached out to by others on other councils and around Ma'ami, asking if we have issues, because they do as well. But I'm wondering, I guess, whether it makes more sense to, you know, join efforts with them to try to get something to change at Toledo Edison versus taking on a whole new infrastructure and supporting, you know, the poles and, like, putting them in and then, you know, addressing the long-term kind of issues with them. You know, it was brought to my attention that, you know, we took over 96 poles on the trail and that we had in the budget to do some on Dussel Drive. But, you know, like we talked about in the past, having something in the budget doesn't necessarily mean that it's a definite, and the project is going to be cost enough that it's going to have to come back to council to vote on it, yes or no. And so I'm wondering, I guess, to this point now where we're having multiple areas, have this, you know, come up for a discussion, whether it needs to be more of a plan, because when we start kind of okaying them at first piecemeal, it seems like not a big deal and doable. But long-term, when, you know, more and more streetlights get added and we're doing it across the community, that upfront cost can be quite a bit, and then the commitment from here on out to service the poles and things like that then comes onto our shoulders. I feel like if this is truly something that should be Toledo Edison's responsibility, you know, the last thing, especially with the whole Strong Towns thing, is that we need to do is to yet again add another infrastructure responsibility, you know, to our citizens. So I guess those are just a couple things I wanted to say. Like, you know, I found that we hadn't increased rates from like '85 to 2021, which isn't a surprise, and that happened with a lot of rates. That's why we've had to increase. Everything goes up. But we did a substantial increase in 2022, and then we've made increases since. It's my understanding our fund is healthy, and, you know, with all the other cost increases, the last thing we need to do is, you know, put assessments out there for yet another rate increase. So I guess I'm wondering a few things. I would like this to, we were just doing the first reading this week, but I think this is definitely something that should be discussed in Finance Committee, because it is a big deal. It's a big project. It's a lot of money. So I would like to make a motion to move it to Finance Committee. I don't know if this is the time or not, but I'd like to do that.
We can do that. There's also something else. I'll ask for a second.
I'll second, but I have a comment as well. Go ahead. One of my concerns with this as well is our Service Department's already stretched thin. They've got tons of projects ongoing and upcoming. I know personally for me, when I'm on a job and I get pulled off to, let's say, for example, they get pulled off to go fix a light, it takes a two-day job, it turns into a five-day job, because you're going back and forth. So I want to make sure that we're not stretching them even more thin than they already are. I mean, if there's a way that we can address the numbers that we have in our Service Department to ensure that we could do this, which again creates a whole other financial issue, which is another reason I think it should be sent back to Finance Committee.
And actually, did you have something?
I just had one question.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Mayor.
The assessment, have we determined what that would be monetarily?
4% more.
4% more. Do we know what, so...
About $30,000 annually difference.
Okay, so what does that equate to each residence or...
About a $5 increase per individual, on the average. Remember, this is all parcels.
And monthly?
Annually.
$5 annually?
Mm-hmm. As an average, yes.
Thank you. There's, I'd just like to comment about the current state of affairs on the poles. They've been rusting and dropping off and literally hitting the ground for now the last few years. They're in dire condition. I mean, they're in bad shape. And some of them just, in a storm, will just fall right in the street. You know, we don't know what is going to hit. I think when we look at this, $5 annually, I would encourage council to go ahead and pass this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, we did have a substantial increase, but the rates hadn't been raised since 1988. It was a long time where the rates weren't kept up with the cost of doing business, and that's why we had to do that higher increase. Sorry? Go ahead.
There's just one other comment on that. It's my understanding that the rates for street lighting cover both operating expenses and capital expenses. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And that the operating expenses are approximately 30% of the total that we spend in Department 211. It's pretty close, around 30%. Third?
Well, it depends on the year, but it's approximately $300,000 is the operating expense.
Okay. I deal in nice round numbers at times, just to get a handle on it. So while, I'll acknowledge, you know, what Mayor McDonald's saying is that we do have some poles that fall down. I think there's room for considering perhaps not an increase of 4%, but perhaps a decrease if we have a plan that really looks very closely at the capital, because we have B-funds that could fund essential capital expenses as well.
Thank you. Councilman Markle? Markle? Puffenberger, sorry.
Thank you. But I guess in response to the polls, you know, if we've, and I feel like in the past we did do some sort of assessment, I remember conversations happening about the state of the poles, because I do remember us having issues, I do remember some falling. But I feel like it's different if we did an assessment and we did something with those poles. It's my understanding that we're taking large swaths of a street and replacing all of them. But once again, it's Toledo Edison's responsibility. And I feel like long-term, the new poles and then servicing the poles in addition to what we already pay for, you know, paying for electricity and buying the light bulbs, I remember we've done, you know, buying of LED light bulbs and did switchovers with that. It's still, it's an added expense, and if we're looking at this now for the whole community, I mean, that's a lot of poles. And it's still, I feel like part of it is Toledo Edison needs to take responsibility, and I do not believe we are the only people in the area that feel that way. So I also believe that there are others that also have this kind of bone to pick with them. And it's, so do we make it a point to cause everyone a higher expense because we don't want to take that initiative? And I know we've been contacting them over the years, and they're unresponsive. But if people join efforts and try to contact them together as one whole group versus individually, will that cause any difference? I don't know. It's, you know, we're getting bits, the group, this group of poles, that group of poles, next group of poles, and at first, when you do the first one or two, it doesn't seem like a big deal. But then when we, once we include all the poles, it's going to turn into a lot of money. So...
Councilman Noonan?
Thank you, council, President Barrow. I guess my, I guess, question to both the state minister and the finance director, obviously this is the first reading, so I just want to make sure that if we do a Finance Committee meeting, I'm assuming it'll be in between the first and the second reading, so it doesn't really conflict with any timelines or anything, right?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to make sure. That's all.
Thank you. Any other comments on that?
One more question. Did we not have the interns last summer, two years ago, doing inventory on poles for either condition of them or whether the lights have actually been changed? I don't remember. I know we...
He didn't do lights changed. One of the interns went around counted lights that we thought were owned by us, but I don't know if we actually have a very good count yet still. If, I'm sorry. Hey, I'm sorry, if you've done...
No, no, I was just curious.
I just, I'd like to clarify. The reason we put the Dussel Street project, we started doing this, is because the police officers and the police agency for the last five years has been playing about the dark intersection at Ford and Dussel from the, from the, where Chick-fil-A has been built through there. That's where this project started. Five poles that I know of have rusted off and fallen off, and I've contacted Detroit Edison, or Toledo Edison, at least 30 times about these poles, to no avail. And when they put a pole up, it's to, the hand hole is, it's got black tape wrapped around, and they put a shorter pole in. The idea is that when we start replacing poles, I want to make clear that, yes, they're costly, but they're also costly when Edison does it. We could build for the same thing. We could build for electricity on those poles, there's a lease cost that we pay for each pole. It's not without cost. Now, whether or not we believe that brand-new poles over maybe in a 10- or 15-year period you have to maintain those is a whole other matter. The issue is whether the assessment goes up 4% so that people understand the assessment. If you, if you adjust for the rate of inflation of street lighting cost over the last, since 1988 to 2022, it had not been increased. We doubled it at that point. It should have been more than quadrupled even to keep up with the rate of inflation during that period of time.
But I feel like it's different if we did an assessment and we did something with those poles. It's my understanding that we're taking large swaths of a street and replacing all of them. But once again, it's Toledo Edison's responsibility. And I feel like long-term, the new poles and then servicing the poles in addition to what we already pay for, you know, paying for electricity and buying the light bulbs. I remember we've done, you know, buying of LED light bulbs and did switchovers with that. It's still, it's an added expense. And if we're, if we're looking at this now for the whole community, I mean, that's a lot of poles. And it's still, I feel like part of it is Toledo Edison needs to take responsibility. And I do not believe we are the only people in the area that feel that way. So I also believe that there are others that also have this kind of bone to pick with them. And it's, so do we make it a point to cause everyone a higher expense because we don't want to take that initiative? And I know we've been contacting them over the years and they're unresponsive. But if people join efforts and try to contact them together as one whole group versus individually, will that cause any difference? I don't know. It's, you know, we're getting bits, the group, this group of polls, that group of polls, next group of polls. And at first, when you do the first one or two, it doesn't seem like a big deal. But then when we, once we include all the polls, it's going to turn into a lot of money.
Cosmon, Noonan.
Thank you, Toledo President Barrow. I guess my, I guess question to both the City Minister and the Finance Director, obviously this is the first reading, so I just want to make sure that if we do a Finance Committee meeting, I'm assuming it'll be in between the first and the second reading so it doesn't really conflict with any timelines or anything, right?
That's correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Any other comments on that?
One more question. Did we not have the interns last summer or two years ago doing inventory on poles for either condition of them or whether the lights have actually been changed? I don't remember. I know we-
Didn't the lights change? One of the interns went around counted lights that we thought were owned by us, but I don't know if we actually have a very good count yet still. If, I'm sorry. Hey, I'm sorry. If you've done-
No, no, I was just curious.
I just, I'd like to clarify. The reason we put the Dussel Street project, we started doing this is because the police officers and the police agency for the last five years has been playing about the dark intersection at Ford and Dussel from the, from the, where Chick-fil-A has been built through there. That's where this project started. Five poles that I know of have rusted off and fallen off and I've contacted Detroit Edison, or Toledo Edison at least 30 times about these poles to no avail. And when they put a pole up, it's to, the hand hole is, it's got black tape wrapped around and they put a shorter pole in. The idea is that when we start replacing poles, I want to make clear that, yes, they're costly, but they're also costly when Edison does it. We get billed for the same thing. We get billed for electricity on those poles. There's a lease cost that we pay for each pole. It's not without cost. Now, whether or not we believe that brand-new poles over maybe in a 10- or 15-year period, you're still maintaining those is a whole nother matter. The issue is whether the assessment goes up 4% so that people understand the assessment. If you, if you adjust for the rate of inflation of street lighting cost over the last, since 1988 to 2022, it had not been increased. We doubled it at that point. It should have been more than quadrupled even to keep up with the rate of inflation during that period of time. Same thing happened with our sewer rates, which is why they had to go up so substantially. I think the point is, is should you have a streetlight program and should they be our own poles? And should you assess them either way through capital assessment or through maintenance assessment? I think that's the issue to go-
Right. And you bringing up that we leased the poles, you know, can we be shown the difference in costs between leasing the poles and have our own? And then look at that long-term, you know, what it's going to cost, time and everything else to keep the poles up. And, but I do have another question after that. So if that's the case for that area, have we lost those five poles and that's why it's so dark there now because those five poles are missing?
No. The five poles are intermittent all over town. We're having a problem with the bottom of these poles rusting all over town. One was in the former mayor's neighborhood. It fell into the street. I had a resident call me. Three have fallen on Ford Street down by the, between Cracker Barrel and further toward Illinois. And then we lost another pole. I can't remember where, but even one of our own poles fell uptown here. Two of them did actually because they had rusted out because they were painted Mami Rust and you can't tell if they're rusting until you start vibrating a roller on them and they fall. One over here and one up, one by Speedway and one by the coffee shop uptown in Conant that I'm aware of. But I can get you the price because we had pricing for brand-new light poles that were done by Edison as a part of the 20A project.
Okay, so that's something we can discuss during Finance if that passes.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. This goes to Finance. I have a second.
I second it.
Yeah, second it. Call the roll.
Kurt?
Yes.
Leinbach?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
Puffenberg?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Viscus?
Yes. I guess one clarification. So we'll still vote on it through consent, just knowing between the first and second reading, we're going to have a Finance Committee meeting, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any more questions or concerns on the agenda? Have you seen none?
I have one question on that. Would the Finance Committee meeting actually be the second reading since it's a public meeting? No?
No.
Okay, thank you.
And there's something too I wanted to bring to the floor. Over the past couple of years, there's been concerns when people will go upstairs to make a payment either on the utility bills or permits or taxes owed. And at some point, they were able to use cash and now no longer they can use cash. So I'd like to refer this topic to the Finance Committee to discuss it a little more in-depth.
The use of cash for utility payments?
Yeah, they can have that option.
Okay.
You know, there's just a lot of alternatives to, to cash and of course, people that they are paying on their phone, they may actually get paid. But there's a lot of people that don't use that app and I want to make it, you know, for everybody in Mami that comes up to pay a bill or take a permit, I'll have that option. So I'd like to refer that also to the Finance Committee.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
President?
Yes.
I will second.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Kurt?
Yes.
Leinbach?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
Puffenberg?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Viscus?
Yes.
Thank you. And that concludes committee in the whole.
Okay, for clarification on the agenda, 11D, which is the resolution for the streetlights in public ways, are we moving that? Is that, are we still voting on?
No, it's staying there. Staying under consent.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. We'll move to citizens' comments. I'll start with Sherri Schumpf, please. Two-minute limit, please.
I thought it was-
And, I'm sorry, three-minute, two, I'm sorry, three-minute limit, yes. And you've listed your community residents. We know that to Mami. Thank you.
Is it all right if I hand these out to you guys? Okay, I want to address some issues from the prior council meetings. Mr. Ruggero spoke about safety issues, including with the islands. I've included photos in that packet where the curbs are black from tires hitting the curbs. He used the word "safety" over seven times, but all you took from that, Mr. Birch, was, and I'll quote because of the transcript, "Had one, yeah, thank you, damaged, you and everyone seeing the islands were two drunk drivers." And you go on, ending with, I'll quote, "Lastly, but I want to make it very clear that the actions of those trees getting wiped out in the bellards, getting knocked down were half-installed were from drunk-driving accidents," end quote. When I questioned this at the last meeting and asked a legitimate question, and I'll quote my words, "I don't know if you were spouting up from your experience when you hit the medium and took out a tree, but these women were not drinking. I have talked to," and before I could finish, you so rudely interrupted my three minutes. As administrator over public safety, yes, I questioned your accident that happened on a Friday and not reported until Saturday. How much damage was there? Were there any photos to document damage? Mostly, did you take advantage of your position to not reporting that accident on the day of? Now, another serious issue that I spoke about three or four times, voter intimidation. I had a request to go to a home for an individual's signature on the initial recall petition because of their health issues. I followed up with that individual when I got home from Florida to see how they were doing health-wise. They asked me, "How did they get my name and number?" and proceeded to tell me that Gay Barrow not only contacted them, but questioned them and also contacted their neighbors. How dare you violate voter intimidation laws, integrity laws? I don't like or appreciate liars and those who think the seats or the positions that they hold, they have, they are above the law. And lastly, Chief Sprou, I am so disappointed in you and the officers that ran the latest damaging video that was released where an officer stated, "We got a call for service, but we're not going to go." An officer takes an oath to protect and to serve. Since when did it become a selective service? Now, Margot, I did have an attorney review this. There are no threats. And last page is my complaint that I filed with the Ohio Secretary of State Integrity Division. Thank you.
Aaron Collins? You listed your community residents, America, I believe it is Oregon, Ohio.
Welcome. Thank you. I told, I think it might have been Mr. Kirk's wife, that I would make a public apology. I reviewed several previous city council meetings and as a person with a Dexcom G7 insulin monitor myself, I know that alarm sound. I know yours because my, somebody has one. I heard it multiple times and was watching you check your phone. So I apologize for the comment I made.
Thank you.
And I'll put a video up to support it, like I said I would. So the definition of crazy, speaking of that video, crazy is equals mentally deranged. Deranged equals insane. Insane means a state of mind which prevents normal perception, behavior, or social interaction, seriously mentally ill. How many times has this body sued the residents to stop a recollection? That sounds like insanity to me. Isn't it insanity doing the same thing over and over expecting a different response? You guys have lost completely every time. It keeps going, keeps going. I'm sorry, I'm really irritated today. Mr. Barrow, would you be willing to give up your, your phone records? I know that lady's name and her phone number. Would you be willing to give up your phone for me to search that phone for that woman's phone number? Don't think so. Now, Puffenberg. Toledo Edison, if they're responsible for taking care of those poles, if I remember correctly, it was $300,000 operating budget, that's a 10% increase in that $30,000, aside from garbage going up, attempted with the water, all these other things. A 10% increase is pretty significant. Wouldn't it be wise to use Mr. Leinbach and his ability and willingness to sue to maybe take legal action against Toledo Edison? Maybe put this stuff in escrow. But every money, every bit of money that goes to Toledo Edison, put it in escrow.
Allow the man to speak, please. Go ahead.
Put it in escrow. Hold that against them. You know, if you're a landlord and, you know, your people don't get their things fixed like they're supposed to, they can put their money in escrow with the county. I recommend doing that. I believe Mr. Harris isn't here. He said that in a recent interview that people have got his phone number and no one contacts him. Everyone here has my number, my email address, and no one has contacted me. Nobody. If you just talk to me, I won't sue. My attorney's got it drawn up, ready to go. I'm giving you guys a chance. I don't want to sue. And if I do sue, if I do win, at least, at least 50% of that money will go through the 4H foundations and groups that lost money because of the events that were held there or to be held there that were then taken away from them. It's, you guys got to do better. Like, I came here, I know I came here a little hot at first. I came in here as an independent, just asking questions, okay? Intentionally with the shut-up shirt to, you know, see how it's going to be gauged because I've gotten a lot of reports from a lot of people about this for quite a while, including some of my own customers. I'm a small business owner. I work in and out of Mami. I have for years. A lot of my customers, they're trapped in Mami. I'm like, what's this about? So I've been educated on it for all over the year, just looking and digging. And I come up here to ask some questions. I got a little irritated when a city council person, he'll shut up, apologizes to the mayor but not the person. Then I get treated the way I did, what, a month and a half ago. It's, it's got to stop. You guys got to do better. Casey, could you send me a copy of the contract of the Toledo Edison, please?
Appreciate it.
You guys can have it.
Doug Davidson? Mr. Davidson, you listed your community residences, Mami.
Yes.
Yeah. And items C and D, is that what you-
Yes, it was-
On the agenda?
Pertaining to the lighting. But I must apologize, my pregnant presence here is kind of, because I'm ignorant of all of the ordinances and haven't really read them, but I was speaking to the fees and everything, but a lot of the discussion that has already taken place here earlier has kind of answered some of my questions about the fees and that. But I would like to say that I do appreciate Ms. Puffenberg's comments about spreading out and this becoming a big boondoggle and wanting replacement of more than what's necessary as far as poles and everything. I understand maintenance is important, poles need to be replaced, et cetera, et cetera. But I would speak again against anything that would be, that would lean itself towards beautifying Mami instead of just replacing what's needed. So that's what I would like to speak to. I mean, that's, that's really all I had to say. Oh, and I, sorry, I should have thanked, thanked the mayor, thanked city administrator and the council for allowing me to speak. I appreciate that. So I-
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Appreciate it. Thank you. And last one is Chelsea Ziss, community residences, Mami. Welcome.
Well, my thunder was stolen a little bit. I was also going to speak about the streetlights. I was glad to hear a lot of the conversation and I, my main thing was simply exactly what you asked for, a more detailed plan, a better understanding of what the increase would go towards and why it's necessary when we're all kind of being nickled and dimed to death with everything else going on. So I very much appreciate it. I look forward to the Finance Committee when that happens. Since I've got a little bit of extra time, I did have a backup thing to talk about, some nothing, if not a planner. I did want to ask, and I did speak with Alan while we emailed back and forth about the new public records policy. I recently took the Attorney General's course for public records policy. It's a three-hour course. With the new updates to the law and some of the changes that are being made to the policy, there are things, and I'm not a lawyer and I don't necessarily understand all of it in the context of what it is, but some of the things like the scanning fees, not understanding why something would have to be copied and then scanned in and sent to be charged. I would ask, it's a free course, if you all would maybe wait on passing this public records policy. I have no issues with the body cam and the dash cam footage being charged. That's directly in the law. But some of the other changes might raise a couple of eyebrows. I would suggest, if any of you are interested, maybe tabling that for a minute and taking that course again, the in-person one or at least the virtual one where you can ask them some questions. Because I made some questions about scanning fees and the answer did not exactly line up with what we're doing. We also talked a little bit about what could be considered privileged versus not privileged because that is not a term used in 149.43. It is used in some of the statutes that that references and it's of course used in some of the court cases. But in an era and a time where, again, we're all asking for transparency, I'm a little bit worried about the changes to the policy and then nobody has, as far as I know, I was out of town for a couple of days, asked a lot of questions. So that was all I was going to ask is maybe let's take a second, take another look at that, maybe contact the auditor and make sure that our policy is up to stuff. There's been a lot of changes and I'm not making any accusations or changes. I'm just saying it's hard to understand and there's a lot of new things. I would appreciate you taking a beat and really looking into it a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, chief, could you dispose of that, the stuff that's on the podium there, please? Okay, we'll move on to adoption of the agenda. There was some movement on the agenda, so just so everybody's aware, that 10G has been moved now to 11E. And I think that's the only changes, right? We'll need a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the agenda as amended.
And I will second that motion.
Thank you. Anything further on that? And then we'll call the roll.
Kurt?
Yes.
Leinbach?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
Puffenberg?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Viscus?
Yes.
Approval of meeting minutes on May 19th and June 5th of the special meeting. I need a motion and a second for that, please.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve the regular meeting minutes from May 19th and the special, and the minutes of the special meeting on June 5th.
Second. Anybody?
I'll second.
Thank you. Call the roll on the meeting minutes approval.
Kurt?
Yes.
Leinbach?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
Puffenberg?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Viscus?
Yes.
Petitions and communications, there are none. We'll move to consent calendar. We'll take a motion and a second and then we'll discuss these. Mr. Leinbach?
Yes, I'll make that motion to approve the consent calendar items.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. A is a recommendation from the city administrator authorizing the clerk to return transfer request form for liquor permit to J.D. Drive-Thru LLC without requesting a hearing. That's a transfer of a liquor permit. Anything on that? Anything further? B is a recommendation from the city administrator, second reading of ordinance 14-2025, amending section 1305.101, ordinance 3-2024 of the Mami codified ordinances specifying and coordinating narrative of section 1305-10 and homeowner affidavit. Anything further on that? Mr. Birch?
No.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify on this one. This is a second reading and I know that I haven't received any additional input from people. that I haven't received any in additional input from people. Uh, I don't believe the city administrator, my house Timmy's got any, this is a time, I mean, if they have any, any questions or concerns, um, we've got till the next meeting, but we appreciate input if you have any.
Okay, and we'll amend that as it's printed as, to the second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before it gets late in the meeting, if I could ask Mr. Sprouse something, chief. But was said in, um, public comment.
Oh, can we do that right after this, the reading of the consent or get?
Oh, no, I thought you were voting on consent. That's fine.
Okay.
Sorry.
We'll vote on the consent. Thank you.
Sorry.
Okay.
Thought you had done that right.
Um, so, uh, C is a recommendation from the city administrator approving the road closures on Holgate, 7th and Craig, uh, on the evening of July 11th for the annual Maumee Glow 5K race walk for the Maumee Senior Center. And we actually had a letter from the senior center director, Melinda Rubel, requesting, uh, the closures for this race, which is a yearly thing for, it's a fundraiser for the senior center.
Oh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, I did want to point out that they are changing the race from a morning race to an evening race.
Yes, okay.
Which is new this year. It should be, I, I know from experience that it is an awfully hot run. So hopefully, with it being a little later in the day, it will be a little less miserable and maybe we'll get some more people out there.
Hence the glow sticks on everybody?
Correct.
Gotcha.
Did they say what time it's going to start? Uh, 6:30.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Uh, D is a recommendation from the city administrator authorizing the closure of the following streets for the Music Fest and the Muba Family Picnic, the Hunter Block of West Dudley and East Dudley, Hunter Block of West Wayne and East Wayne, Allen Street between Dudley and Wayne, the 200 to 400 block of Connet, uh, at 9:00 AM on July 3rd with the bridge closing at 7:30 for the fireworks. And this is obviously the Maumee, uh, Perrysburg combined fireworks. Uh, the launching point of this is going to be on Rapids Road, just off of Connet Street as you're going into Perrysburg, just to the right, that entrance into the Ford parking lot. Um, that's where the launch point is. And of course, there's a safety zone circle around that that'll allow, uh, spectators to come up to that safety zone. I believe it's 600 feet from that launch pad. So, um, anything further on that? Nope. Okay, D is a recommendation from the city administrator authorizing the closure, um, I'm sorry, E is recommendation from the city administrator authorizing the closure of the following streets for the summer fair, Hunter Block of West and East Dudley, Hunter Block of West and East Wayne, Allen Street between Dudley and Wayne, the 200, 200 to the 400 block of Connet on August 8 and 9 with an extension of the sound ordinance until midnight. So this is our summer fair. Anything, any questions on that?
I have, I have one thing on this too. They're changing the summer fair up a bit this year. They've got new people running it and I think one of the cool things they're doing is, um, they're moving the stage out to Connet so it's more visible. They've also brought in, uh, they're bringing in a national act. If you're a 90s person like me, you might remember the band Rusted Root. Uh, the new version of their band is the act for Saturday night. So I think that, uh, that, I know Project I Am has worked with them before, I think, actually. So I'm, I'm looking forward to that as a little nostalgia thing. So I think it's really cool what, uh, what all, all Muba has been doing with this.
Okay, thank you. F is a recommendation from the law director approving and updating the public records policy to reflect the current laws and fees. Anything on that, Alan?
No, we're really not making any significant changes, just the, you know, again, the police video fee and just informationally, just adding in some items that show that there are certain records that obviously are privileged and won't be released, um, and redacted. So, um, there's nothing significant about these changes.
Okay, thank you. G is a recommendation from the law director. Um, we've moved that out. And H is a recommendation from the finance committee approving the property and liability insurance renewal and additional cyber insurance for a total of $214,598. Is this with the Ohio plan?
Yes.
Okay. Anything further on that?
Uh, we increased our cyber insurance, um, with a small increase in the premium, but we felt is worth it.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, I is from the city administrator, first reading of ordinance, ordinance 17 dash 2025, an ordinance amending 16 2024 and establishing basis for allocation of assessments for costs of, uh, lighting of streets and public ways in the city of Maumee. And I believe this is going to move to the finance committee after the consent calendar. J is authorizing a professional services agreement with ADS, environmental services to provide monthly field services and data services for 22 sewer flow monitors and two rain gauges for 12 months in an amount not to exceed 198,000. Uh, this came from, uh, our capital projects manager, manager Matt Miles. It continues to be necessary for the city to monitor the sanitary sewer flow volumes at select locations in order to better understand issues being experienced with inflow and infiltration of stormwater into the sanitary system. Thanks to the efforts of the Ohio EPA, 20 flow monitors were installed at key locations within the sanitary sewer system and two electronic rain gauges were installed within the city during October of '21. These monitors and gauges became the property of City Maumee and two additional locations have been added. The devices were necessarily installed in extreme harsh environments and they require constant maintenance, hence the, the, the request for this. Additionally, the data gathered by the devices must, uh, monitor in order to provide reliable information for our current reporting needs as well as, uh, for future analysis. Direct access to this data is vital to plan for the elimination of overflow from the city's sewer system and to monitor the progress. Anything further on that?
Nothing.
Okay, thank you. And K is a recommendation from the city administrator authorizing a contract with TD Engineering, LLC for engineering services relative to the Uptown Sewer Rehabilitation in an amount not to exceed 144,540. And I believe, um, I would like this also, um, this is come from our city administrator. As positioned by the capital projects manager, this agreement is necessary to properly design, bid, and administer the construction of the Uptown Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Phase Six program and complete the mainline gravity, sanitary sewer lining, and mainhole rehabilitation in the Uptown area. Anything further on that?
It specifically brought, um, Broadway and a small portion of Harrison on the River Flats.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any further discussion on the consent calendar? Okay, we'll call the roll for approval, please.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Okay, a consent calendar is approved. We'll move to new business. A is a recommendation from the law director requesting two motions here, suspending the rules and approval to approve ordinance 15 dash 2025, an ordinance to update and revise portions of the Maumee codified ordinance by adopting certain updates to state laws and adopting current replacement pages and declaring an emergency. This is done by Walter Drain, an American, uh, legal company that has done this for us for many, many, many years, updates our codified ordinances, our police ordinance, our fire ordinances, our administrative ordinances, and so forth. Now, a lot of it is to follow state code and we do, um, have this as a yearly update. Anything further, anything further, Alan?
Nothing further.
Yes, Mr. Noonan?
I was just going to make the motion.
Okay, thank you, yes. Uh, proceed.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. First make a motion to suspend the rules and declare an emergency.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
And then, uh, thank you again, Mayor McDonald. Make a motion to approve ordinance 15 2025, an ordinance to update and revise persons of the Maumee codified ordinances by adopting certain updates to state laws and adopting current replacement pages and declaring an emergency.
I will second that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We'll call the roll.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Thank you. That's approved. Uh, we'll move to, uh, B, recommendation from the city administrator approving resolution 13 dash 2025, authorizing community housing and impact preservation, uh, the chip grant partnership between, uh, Lucas County, City of Oregon, and Maumee and declaring an emergency. And we would entertain two motions for this. Um, the, the chip is something we put in for every year and I know the amount that we ask for, we don't even come close to getting. Um, but what was, do you recall, um, Jennifer, what that was?
We actually didn't get it last year.
Okay. Was it hover around eight, $9,000, $6,000, something like that?
Uh, we carry a balance of $6,000 right now.
Okay.
Uh, many years ago. Uh, but I believe the chip amount that we requested last year was closer to 300,000.
Yeah, we requested 300, but we get six a lot of times. But can you, it, Mr. Birch, could you explain what this money's used for?
Money's used for homeowner rehabilitation, for restoration for people of low mind income.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Uh, two motions on this, please.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and declare an emergency.
I'll second.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
And I'll approve, I'll move, motion to approve resolution 013 2025, authorizing community housing and impact preservation chip partnership agreement between Lucas County and the City of Oregon and the City of Maumee and declaring an emergency.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We'll call the roll.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Okay, resolution 13 is approved. We move to C, recommendation from the finance committee approving ordinance 16 dash 2025 and ordinance amending the rates and fees ordinance, uh, 14 dash 2024 and to adopt additional fees and adopt updated rates and fees and declaring an emergency. And I believe, um, some of the changes on this, um, one of them is a fire and safety fees rates, um, which included landing zones for helicopters, which we typically are seeing out by the, um, urgent care center. Uh, second is a, um, division of police miscellaneous fees, golf cart inspection, um, that I know that we're doing now since they can be road ready. And also the public relax, uh, public records release on, um, dash cam and body camera footage, since, um, a lot of that preparation and, um, labor that's involved in that is, the cost has gone up exponentially in having to release videos. I believe those were the three main pieces of that. That's what I picked out of it. Anything further on that?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
There were two other ones, um, just so people know, fairground permits.
Yes.
And, um, an administrative fee for, uh, a nuisance where your lawn has to be cut because it's too high. I just want to say, um, while I don't have a problem with any of those fees, I, I'm not sure why we're passing this as an emergency. So, that was my comment.
Okay, we'll entertain two motions on this, please.
So to clear, I'm sorry, Mayor, if I can.
Yes, go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
Uh, so to clarify, um, the landing zone fees, those were passed in ordinance 142 24 and then the golf cart inspection was passed in ordinance 32 21. Um, the only new item is the fairgrounds event permit that, um, Mr. Lowenbauer put together.
Okay.
So it's really just consolidating, um, all of the fees into one ordinance. That's all. But you are correct. They are already in place with the exception of the body cam and dash cam, um, uh, House Bill 315 information as well as the, um, fairgrounds event.
Okay. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Sprouse.
Be ready for a motion?
Yes, please.
I move to suspend the rules and declare an emergency.
Need a second, please?
I will second that motion.
Thank you. We'll call the roll.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
No.
Noonan?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
And I move to approve ordinance 016 2025 and ordinance amending rates and fees, including ordinance 014 2024, and to adopt additional fees and adopt updated rates and fees and declaring an emergency.
I will second that motion.
We'll call the roll, please.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
No.
Noonan?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Thank you. That is passed, ordinance 16. Uh, we move to D, recommendation from the finance director, um, approving resolution 11 dash 2025, declaring the necessity of lighting the streets and public ways of the city of Maumee. City's planning to increase safety effort and replace dilapidated posts and fixtures. Nothing further on that, right?
This is just determining the necessity.
Just determining the necessity with the resolution. Entertain a motion, please. Yes?
Uh, thank you, Mayor McDonald. I will make a motion to approve resolution 011 dash 2025, a resolution declaring the necessity of lighting the streets and public ways of the city of Maumee, Ohio.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. We'll call the roll.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Thank you. That is passed. And, um, 11 E is a recommendation from the law director authorizing him to sign an amicus brief being filed in the city of Columbus in support of the city of Cincinnati and a pending matter in the Ohio Supreme Court titled City of Cincinnati, Exrel Mark Miller, Realtor, or Relator Appellate versus City of Cincinnati, Respondents and Appellies and Over the Rhine Community Housing. Anything further on that, law director?
Just additionally, we're part of the Ohio Municipal League or, and they generally don't ask for support for too many things, but this is one of the items they ask for support for, um, from the city of Maumee and from cities throughout Ohio. So there's numerous jurisdictions that are basically signing onto this brief, so to speak, that could significantly change the process, um, that, and it, as indicated before, that has the potential to delay implementation of any legislation that's passed by the city.
Okay, anything further on that? Yes, Mr. Lineback?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, yeah, in one of the briefs that I read, um, the issue that the, I believe the plaintiff is bringing is that the courts have overstepped their interpretation of this, of the statutory law in ORC 733, 56, 58, and 59, um, just having to do with taxpayer standing. And, uh, I just see this as, uh, not a, I see this as something that is potentially restricting an individual citizen's ability to challenge, uh, you know, what, what the city is doing, but, you know, there's still a process. It, my understanding, it can't just be frivolous. It's where, uh, an individual taxpayer requests, uh, a municipal law director or solicitor to pursue something that they believe is, had been done incorrectly and the solicitor or law director, you know, doesn't do it. So then it becomes, uh, the law. It is, you know, what the General Assembly passed, I mean, a long, long time ago, going back to 1868 from what I read, uh, that a taxpayer can step in and have a, a right to remediate. So, uh, I see this as not necessarily a really cut and dried issue. So that's why I'd ask for it to be on, uh, new business so we could have a clean vote.
Okay, thank you. Anything further from council? Take a motion, please, to entertain this.
Mr. Mayor, I, uh, move, we authorize the, excuse me, uh, authorize the law director to sign an amicus brief filed by, uh, the city of Columbus and the captioned, and the reference captioned matter now pending before the Ohio Supreme Court.
A second from the floor?
I would second that motion.
Thank you. We'll call the roll on this, please.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
No.
Noonan?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Well, and that is, is approved. So we'll move to old business. Um, and I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Noonan.
Uh, thank you, Mayor McDonald. Uh, again, I'm, I'm really excited to do this and thank you again for the opportunity, um, to, uh, you know, for this to be the third reading today when I was actually present. But I would like to make a motion. So thank you again, Mayor Mo, uh, Mayor McDonald. I will make a motion to approve resolution, uh, 009 2025, a resolution authorizing multi-year support, uh, for Project I Am.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor. I will second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion from council? I think we all agree this is a, this is an awesome program and we certainly do appreciate the efforts of the Project I Am. So this is, uh, we're going to, a resolution authorizing multi-year support. We'll call the roll.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Thank you. And that is approved. We'll move to B, a recommendation from the finance committee approving ordinance 13-2025 and ordinance amending Maumee Codified Ordinance 169-2015 in section 194.051H of the Maumee Codified Ordinances, requiring companies with 10 or more W-2s to file electronically. Any discussion on this? Yes?
Just a quick comment. I totally understand the reason behind this, which is to, you know, save work by, you know, the city workers. What I'd like to avoid is more legislation when legislation I don't think is really required. This is a relatively, relatively small issue, and I have talked to the finance director about this. They have a nice, you know, acceptable process, it's good process, when an employer who has more than 10 employees, when they submit, you know, their W-2s in written form, I don't know where the threshold is, maybe it was at 50 today, but, you know, if it could be a 10, where they contact the employer with a letter and let them know that it really would be a great idea if they could, you know, do it electronically. You know, there's probably a benefit for them as well as for the city. And I'd just like to see that continued, because it's going to go away. I think smaller employers are going to see that it is in their benefit, and then we don't have this legislation that says, "You have to do it." It's that they see that it makes sense. So, again, I understand the purpose behind it, but I'd like just to see, see you continue that effort in reaching out to the employers and showing them perhaps a better way for them to do it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Barrow?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor McDonald. I spoke with our finance director, and she informed me that these companies that have 10 employees or more already have, that they already have to electronically file, and it would simply be a matter of resending it. Could you, to us, for example, would you clarify that, please?
Sure. So, the Social Security Administration and the state of Ohio already require with employers who have more than 10 W-2s to submit those electronically in the same format that we would, we also accept currently. So, it's just a matter of, they would electronically send it to the Social Security Administration, Ohio, and us in the same format, in the same threshold as well, 10 or more W-2s.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Puffenberger.
Thank you. And I just wanted to say, too, that we did talk about, as they sent letters each year, asking them to do so, they will be sent a letter letting them know of the changes. Did we talk about, is that correct? Am I over? Thought I remember that from our last meeting.
We did talk about that, and I think that would just be a good reminder to those employers and a good information contact point that we accept the same format. It could be that they're not aware that we accept the same format.
Thanks.
Good, thank you. And this is the third reading on this. It's been out there for a little bit.
Just one more comment.
Yes.
Thank you. They're already doing the work, they're already doing that work, that threshold, so all they have to do, and I think would simplify things, simplify things for them as well as us, that they simply have to, and that's why I wanted to ask you, thank you, Jennifer, they just simply send that information directly to her.
Well, not quite to me, but yes.
Well, to your office.
Yes, to the department.
Thank you. I want a clarification there.
Okay, we'll entertain a motion in a second on this issue, please. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 013-2025 and ordinance amending Maumee Codified Ordinance 169-2015 in section 194.051H of the Maumee Codified Ordinances.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. I'll second that motion.
Thank you. We'll call the roll on that.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
No.
Noonan?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to comments. Last Friday was Safety City graduation for a number of kiddos in our community. It was a really good celebration, look forward to that every year. Mr. Lineback, Mr. Puffenberger was there, had an opportunity to say a few words. It's always interesting that there are moms out there that are bringing their kids to Safety City that I had when they were five years old. So, it's kind of humbling to see these folks kind of come around, and they're moms in their mid-30s, but it was a good time, had by all. Also, we're coming up as our kid mayor, follow through some of the thoughts and recommendations that some of the kiddos made in their essays. We're going to look at following through with that. The first thing we're going to do is, one of them talked about community gardens. We're going to visit the Walcott House and kind of explain some things. I think Ms. Puffenberger is going to join us, and kind of teach the kids about gardening and mulching and some of the organic pieces that are going on out there. And then we're going from there to the senior center and play bingo with the seniors.
Oh, yeah.
So, that'll be, that'll be exciting stuff. The kids are looking forward to it. I also got a thank you letter from the American Legion Post from the Memorial Day Parade. "We at the American Legion Post 320 extend our grateful appreciation for your support of the recent Maumee Memorial Remembrance Ceremony and Parade on the 26th of May." We would also like to thank Dr. Patrick Birch, the Public Information Officer Nancy Gagné, Police Chief Josh Sproul, and the Maumee Police Division, as well as the City Services Supervisor Bob Simon and his staff, for your combined contributions to ensure the event was worthy in remembering and honoring our fallen comrades. Both the parade and the remembrance ceremony have received nothing but compliments and support by not only the veterans and families of Post 320, but from many people within the Maumee community. Our American Legion Memorial Day Events Coordinator, Chris Laporta, we're reaching out to our staff in the near future to schedule a debriefing meeting so that in 2026, Memorial Day events can even be more successful in honoring our fallen heroes. That's signed by Christopher Fargo, the Post 320 commander. So, thank them for that. Appreciate their support. We'll move to council. Mr. Kurt?
Thanks, Mayor. First of all, I would welcome my friend Nick Militello to serve us here in Maumee. I'm glad he's with us, although I, I'm sure he'll be doing a very good job, although I hope he doesn't, you know, provide his service to me or my residents. But if he does, I'll tell Mary, "Look, it's Nick. He should be okay." Belatedly, welcome, I would welcome Paula Burney from the Exchange Club. I learned a lot about, from the Rotary Club, rather, excuse me, I learned a lot about the Rotary Club, things I hadn't known before, and I look forward to work with them a little bit. Third, I appreciate Judge Corey's comments about acoustics for autism. Thank you, Nicole. We really appreciate everything you've done for that over the, I don't know how many years, but thank you. And finally, Farmer's Market, I, we did not attend this last Farmer's Market, we were out of town, but I understand it was very successful, and we look forward to attending the next one that we're able to. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Lineback?
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. Also commenting on Memorial Day, so this past Memorial Day, I heard an expression, if you will, that it is very appropriate for Memorial Day, that when a man or a woman dies, they die twice. First time is when they cease existing, living and breathing. Second time they die is the last time their name is ever said. And that's why these remembrance services, you know, are important, to remember names, to remember names, so we don't forget. Second item, Rotary, what a great community asset. My father was in Rotary, my father-in-law was in Rotary, father-in-law did a lot of work in Haiti in particular, but major service to others, really focused. I'm hoping we can really build on that this coming year. Public records, just a minor thing, but when this first came up, I had a question about scanning, and I checked with my office manager, and depending on the technology you have, if you use your regular copier, you pay for a scan, too. Every time that light flashes, you get charged for essentially a copy, whether it goes onto paper or if it goes into an image. So, but I think if, as we go forward, if we find that there's something amiss with our public records cost structure, we'll change it. We'll change it. Third, this is really just about me personally, but anytime we have an ordinance or a resolution, something, a motion, where there's a cost impact on the residents, I'd like it not to be an emergency. People don't get a chance to see what it is and understand. I think we need to plan our work well enough so that that doesn't have to happen, and that was the reason I voted no on the fees. I agree with probably all of them, but I think people who are affected would like to know about that. And lastly, we had a great event June 2nd, Honor Flight flew out of Toledo Express. For those not familiar with Honor Flight, it's a volunteer, complete volunteer organization. There is no funding from the state, no funding from the feds, and individuals put in their money and their time, a lot of time, to be able to fly veterans, male and female, to Washington, DC, to see all the monuments. And the big surprise is when they come back, and they walk in that hangar. The doors have been closed, you have like the Buffalo Soldiers were out there welcoming people, you know, back off the plane with flags, walking down a corridor, and they walk up to the hangar, but the doors are closed. When those doors open, hundreds of people in there cheering. And a lot of these, this year, you know, there are hardly any, there was one World War II vet scheduled, he was sick, couldn't make it, handful of Korean War veterans, a lot of Vietnam guys. And I think most of us who are my age or so, you know, know that the Vietnam veterans who came back did not come back to welcoming arms. So, there's a lot of tears from, a lot of people who are present, but especially the soldiers. And it's great that there are people from Maumee and the surrounding areas who participate in that, just make it such an amazing life experience for those soldiers coming on back. So, I was proud to be part of that as a guardian.
Thank you. Mr. Noonan?
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. Once again, well, this will be the first time I'm seeing it, but thank you, council, for actually supporting the resolution for the multi-year support for Project I Am. So, thank you, council, for doing that officially. And just reiterate, you know, thank you to the administration for working with the Project I Am people, you know, not only this past year, but all the years prior, and obviously, all the years going forward. So, thank you again for supporting that. It's near and dear to my heart, and I'm glad that we were unanimously able to support that. So, thank you again. The second thing is, somebody already mentioned it before, but the Farmer's Market, I've only been to one out of three, I believe. So, that's been very successful, I've heard, outside of the first one I went to, which was a lot of people. So, kudos to MOBA and people in the city, including Councilmember Puffenberger. I know you've been, you know, integral with that, so kudos to all your time and effort on that, and obviously, the weeks going forward. You know, and that, to me, it's kind of precursor to what I believe is going to be a summer of positivity. Obviously, we just approved here, you know, we're going to have the glow roll coming up. We have our music fest each year with the fireworks, which is, we always get positive comments about that with our revitalization of town, in my opinion. And then obviously, the summer fair, you know, that's always a decent time. So, I'm looking forward to all these events. Of course, I'll be volunteering every which way that I can for those things, among anything else. But I'm looking forward to this summer, you know, with all the stuff we got going in this city. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Puffenberger?
Thank you. I'd like to thank everyone that came out to our Ohio Energy Choice event that we had at the library last week. Jody Haney did the presentation and walked everyone through how you can go to their website and do a comparison of your energy rates, and look for buying your energy from companies that get theirs from clean energy, so you can make the option to buy clean energy. I was very pleasantly surprised. So, city of Maumee has an aggregate currently, based on the, currently the price that we are paying for our electricity is actually higher than what you can get clean energy from off of this website. So, I took my first step the other day to opt out of the aggregate and go, and then my next step is to then sign up for one, through one of these companies to buy clean energy. It was something I did before, and then when we got our solar panels, I had not, you know, done that again. So, this was a great reminder, and it's going to save me money. So, anyone who wasn't able to make it, if you are interested in lowering your electricity bills, please reach out, and I can try to help you best I can or direct you to Jody. She's, it's something she's very excited about and wants to help anyone in any way, shape, or form. I'd like to invite everyone to our Juneteenth event that we're having on June 18th at 6:30 at the Maumee Indoor. The doors will open at 6 o'clock. We are presenting the documentary, "Juneteenth: Faith and Freedom," along with WGTE, and we, the documentary is about, little under an hour, just under an hour, and afterwards we'll be having a panel discussion. Our host will be Charles Welch, and we will have four panelists having a discussion, kind of their thoughts after the movie. And those panelists will be Sarah Eden, who's a supervisor of the Theater of Operations, Maumee Indoor. She's a Waterville resident. Sheila Howard, who's a reporter, journalist for the Toledo Blade. Linda Lucas, who's a Maumee resident, works for the Maine Library. And then Carla Thomas, who's a social justice writer and community advocate. So, we're really excited to be hosting that event this year. Last year, we did the resolution for Juneteenth, and this year, we're able to have an event that we're hoping educates everyone in the community a little bit more about that holiday and, you know, why it's so important. And I would like to thank staff as well for allowing us to have three readings on the rates for the street lane. Thank you.
Mr. Barrow?
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. I wasn't aware of the longevity of the Rotary Club. That was a surprise to hear. I think she's had 75 years. Well, that speaks to a lot about its community and the support they get, because without the community, you would have a home full of six or eight people and couldn't get much accomplished. And Nicole, Project I Am, that's great. I know you're one of the many people who will have people before you. You're now the current, and it's really terrific. You've put us on the map nationwide. There are so many people here, and so many aren't from Maumee to come to this. It's really, it's really an eye-opener. I'm glad that council was unanimous, and I'm sure there would have been, of your project. So, good luck, and let us know what else we can do for you. Thank you.
And Mr. Fiskus?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last two times in a row, because Councilman Harris isn't here, I always get the short end of the stick here. I want to echo what Councilman Lineback said. I'm not a fan of emergency ordinances. I know we have to do them sometimes, and I'm going to get on my soapbox about summer schedule. Summer schedule makes it almost impossible to pass some of these things without doing it as an emergency. Plus, we won't have a super-long, we weren't that long tonight, but a long agenda. I was worried we were going to be here till 10 o'clock tonight. Glad we weren't.
I don't forget, Jennifer.
I'm going to filibuster for three more hours here.
I'll walk out.
Farmer's Market, yeah, three weeks have been great. This upcoming one is the Vendors Farmer's Market, which you will have all the neat crafts and stuff. The normal weeks are just primarily fruits, veggies, plants, and all of that stuff. But this one will have all the fun little crafts that people like. Little League season is winding down. This is the last week of regular season, and then playoffs start this weekend. Also, something cool happening in Maumee. Maumee is hosting the 11U District Tournament, and that is going to be June 27th through July 1st at Ford Field. Six communities will be here. I think it'd be awesome if we can pack that place with folks rooting on our Maumee kids. And that is all I have, I think.
Thank you. I think it speaks volumes to what we're doing to that field, and it's becoming very popular for people to use it.
Yeah, actually, now that you mention it, I was talking to the president of Little League over the weekend, and he says he's gone to multiple tournaments all over, all over the region, and he says he will put our facilities up against anyone in the state. He speaks very highly of it.
Awesome. Thank you. City Minister, your update?
Yeah. A lot of projects going on right now. We're working with EPA pretty closely on what it looks like going forward in terms of our program. I do want to just bring up, before I get into anything else, is I know somebody got up and spoke about my accident, and essentially, one morning when I was supposed to be meeting with staff at Panera, I slid and hit an island with my tire. And I'd like to ask Mr. Sproul, Chief Sproul, when was that accident reported?
It was reported that morning. I was there shortly afterward. Midnight officer tickets, I don't know when, came in and did a report next day. If that's what populated the date reported, but it was reported the morning.
Thank you. I don't know if you want me to get into any issues with this other thing about our sewer program, about where we are in terms of what we're dealing with the EPA right now, or do you want to just wait, right, may give a written report next time?
I think, yeah, if you want to prepare for something next time, that'd be fine.
Okay, thank you.
I know, I think, okay, yeah, that'd be fine.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll take a motion and a second to adjourn until next regulations.
I'll make that motion that we adjourn to the-
Thank you.
I will second.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
Yes.
Noonan?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
We're adjourned.[657.41]